You don't have any light.
Okay, ready, Krista?
Yes.
All right. Sorry. Good evening, folks, and welcome to the Monday, February five. This should be two thousand twenty-four. Meeting of the Park Township's only Board of Appeals. With that, I'd like to approve the agenda. Is there any changes, additions? If not, I take entertaining motion to approve as sent.
So moved.
Support. Motion of support. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Suppose no. All right, you had the minutes in front of you that were sent. Does anyone have any changes? Or clarifications or anything on those minutes from December four of twenty-three?
So Chairman, I do have noticed one correction among page two or three. Hearing I had number one, the four items. Where Ms. Morgan agrees, there's a, there's a, I think, just a typo here that instead of the word either, it should say neither. I believe. Or we say did not create. Either one of those, I think, to be corrected.
I just think it's neither works.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make the record clear. My motion to adjourn was not by Ms. Ead. It was by Mr. Ead.
Okay. You sure?
Well, in a day of gender equality.
All right. Okay, we'll stop there. Thank you both. Anybody else? Entertaining motion to approve with those two changes.
So moved.
Support.
Motion of support. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those know. Very good. All right, with that, let's get out to our public hearings and Mika, will you introduce public hearing number one, please?
So the first hearing this evening is nineteen sixty Lake Street was in the Chippewa neighborhood and but sleeping town. It's not, it, I think it's kind of an interesting application because the project itself stays pretty well within the existing setbacks. The existing setbacks are nonconforming. But it changes just enough to require a couple of different things. So the height we talked about briefly prior to the meeting, the height is not an issue. That was a measurement error on my part. So the height is now something that you'll have to look at tonight. What they're doing, if you're moving your building half of the home, and how can you do it within the same setbacks or greater? So that's still less than required, but the setbacks are not changing. That means that there are going to be two things that you're looking at. One is an addition or enlargement within existing setbacks. There are three standards for that. And the other one is, there is, we talked about this a few meetings ago with a different application. I don't know that the builder has done it this way, but it's less than five feet. And so we decided probably it was the better way to go to also do a variance for that. So the, the exceptions under the additional enlargement within an addition in existing setback say that it can be, you know, less than the existing setback, but a minimum, at a bare minimum of five feet. And this existing setback is four point four feet. The reason for that, I think, I was talking to the building inspector about this is that when, when structures get to be closer than ten feet together, then there are additional requirements as far as firewalls and window placement, things like that. So that's where that comes from.
So, but the way I understand it, this sort of clarification on my part, so the third standard for review on, on of the first three of thirty-eight, four eighty-three E two. That standard can be met by, by reaching an agreement on the four standards for out of thirty-eight seventy.
That's my reading of it, yeah.
So which one do we do first? The second one?
No, I think you would probably, well, say, yeah, that's a little bit tricky because they're related. I think you could either do the first one pending approval of the second one, or you could do the second one first. I would tend to go towards first ones pending approval of the second.
Okay, so whoever makes, if there's going to be a motion in the positive, folks, when you get to the third one of the first set of three standards, the answer to that would be barring approval of the four standards under thirty-eight seventy. I guess, correct, for legality? I'm looking to, I don't care what answers, yes?
I think, I think so.
Okay. All right, just clarification, sorry about the, just trying to make sense before we get into it that we're doing it correctly. All right, thank you, Mika. With that, I'd like to invite the applicant or representative and state your, state your name and address for the record. Also, I think there's a paper to sign in on there.
There is. I'm Elizabeth English for nineteen sixty Lake Street. Is there something else?
Can you, yeah, write that, just write it.
Just write it in there?
Yes, please. And then when you get that done, if you want to make any additional fact statements, we don't need to talk about heights anymore. And I think you understand what we were talking about earlier. We have to carry through on both sets of standards.
I got, could Tim come up and speak too?
Absolutely. You can come up together, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So with this, what we do here at this point is we give you an opportunity, just state your case. If you want to add anything to the written thing, I'd and then we'll, we want you to stick around for questions from the board also.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so the structure's been there for over seventy?
The original structure was fifty.
You had to get both get close to the microphone because we're, we're short. A recording secretary, we want to make sure everything gets on tape.
Okay.
For the record, please.
All right, so.
Please.
So the existing structure was, it's nineteen fifty. So we've had it in the family for a long time. And so it's in need of renovation or repair. So we decided to fix it up and by doing that, we're going to take part of it off and keep the major part is staying. And that is the setback that's four point four.
Is that the garage area?
Yes, the garage area, yeah.
The garage area was an addition that was done, I believe, around eighty-six.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah, so that's four point four off the setback. And then for the new part, we're trying to adhere to the setbacks. And we're moving another four feet away from the setback. So the eight foot, sorry, eight point four feet away.
Okay, so the expansion on the, just so I get it straight, I read it too, but I just want to hear it from you. So the two-story extension that is going to go toward the lake, and I believe that's south, that is going to be an additional, how many feet of the four point four?
That is the twenty.
It's in there, I just didn't remember. It's like twenty some feet, right?
I think it's twenty-two.
Yeah, that's what I remember also, okay. Okay. And then you're going to kick it in and over to the east, I believe that would be, and then it's going to go to eight point four feet. Uh, the new one-story part.
Correct.
Okay. Everybody square with that? Okay, uh, makes sense.
And then I think we're here to tell the other setbacks, and so that was.
We did get some correspondence, I'll ring up in a minute. I got, and one of them at least was from a neighbor that were, that was thinking you were encroaching on Spruce, which is kind of a right of way between your house and the neighbor to the east. Is that Spruce? Is that what it is? I don't remember what the name of the road. It's a road end.
Yes.
But it's not that part, it's not that side, it's the other side, correct?
No, we're on the lake side.
That's what I thought. They were confused on their, yeah. Okay, so. All right, anything you like, else like to add? Okay, stay there for a second if you would. Anybody have questions for them before we do a public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will ask you to take a seat again, please. Uh, we're going to do a public hearing, but we might have some more questions as we do our read on it.
Okay.
So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And for the record, there is three pieces of correspondence. All of them are against it, but I think one of them for sure was confused on what side. So I don't know, but there's three, I guess, and the first one that I read, which is from I don't remember who this from, sorry, anybody know?
I have one from Secanus and Radford. They own nineteen forty-eight Lake Street.
Anyway, the, the correspondence is in record, but the one is not entirely accurate because they're, they're confused on the side, so. Anybody in the audience like to speak on behalf of this item, either for or against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, open up for board discussion. And again, we're going to be looking for two motions. As I said earlier, the first one is on an additional enlargement along with any sixteen setbacks, and that is the three standards that start on Mika's report, page number three. And before we do that, any, any questions, comments to each other? More questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I have a question, maybe direct it to Mika and then maybe to the applicant, I'm not sure. Some of the correspondence that we received, they expressed concerns about the overhang. And it seems to me that's on the south side where we're not looking at a variance request, but is, is there any concern about this overhang not meeting the ordinance requirements?
No, the overhang would be, so you get a couple of feet of, you're able to protrude into the setback a couple of feet with the overhang. If it goes beyond that, then it could be, but it didn't look to me. I didn't, I didn't see that on the
Okay.
Good question, I forgot about that one.
And we're measuring from the survey, not whatever they're looking at.
So if the four foot, four inch or the four point four, I guess I'm not entirely sure which it is, four point four? Um, then they're allowed to have a two-foot overhang into that setback?
Yeah.
And is that currently what is there on the existing?
I didn't, I didn't look at the overhang. When I went out there and looked at it, it didn't see anything that struck me as this is a long, this is a large overhang, so I can't think so.
Okay.
You have, you have a eve overhang into that now, right? It's about the same as what I seen Saturday. It looks.
The overhang on the
west side, correct.
Just probably all three feet off the wall.
It's a bigger, it's more than two feet, right? And the new one's going to be two feet. So it's a less approach when on the overhang, because I, when I went past, I could just see through the bushes. It looked to me like that was more than two feet going to the west.
Yes.
Yeah. That's a good point, and that's probably helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Related to Smorgas comment, I guess my comment, wondering, Mika, is, is there any restrictions with the addition southward towards the lake?
Towards the lake? No. No, there's not. If outside the floodplain, if there's a standard area setback, I know a couple of the comments alluded to some kind of a reason or something on where those go. There's nothing in the code that I can find relevant to that. So I don't know if that's something that was the code at one point and then has been changed. But it's not something that we have regulation by this point. As far as anything special, other than the standard or your setback.
Is your house going to be closer to the lake than your neighbors? Further back, right?
The west, we might be even, but the one to the east, they are further ahead than we are.
Toward the lake.
I, I went into the G I S today and looked measured from all of the surrounding houses to the seawall. Their house is about two feet back further currently from most of the existing houses. It's possible that it would be maybe two feet out further, not precise, but it's not, not a big difference.
And it works out with back rear yard, like averaging.
They could go out further than they're going with the standards.
Right.
Because that's something, to be honest, I was just looking at that, being one of the comments, you know, for the standards for viewing, you know, fuse being, you know, inhibited or something like that for neighbors, I could see that being an issue. But I certainly was looking at the survey. And just graphically, when you look at the survey, they look the south faces compared to the neighborhood of the west. That corner looks in alignment with their.
Right. Well, it, I'm sure it affected neighbors of the west, their current view, because they are out further now than your houses. And so they're going to lose a little bit of their view because their house is going to be even though. That's what I took it as. Which is, that's only fair. I mean, that's, that's, you're not stealing, in my opinion, you're not stealing view because you're not blocking view. You have yours, they have theirs.
That was my reaction, thinking, oh boy, now they're going beyond. I don't know if that's okay.
No, they're not, right. So, not that I see, no.
So that's what we're trying to achieve, then, you know, I think it's fair for the you know, for the line, for sure.
Okay. Good questions. Dennis or Lauren? Okay. Anyone like to make a motion on the first standards?
Can, can I ask one more question?
Really? Okay.
So just understanding, the east improvement gets us, it takes us from twelve point seven to ten point six, right? To the east setback closer?
Sorry, I don't have it right in front of me.
So it looks like we're, we're heading, we're heading east with the addition two point one feet. Closer to the
Four feet, right?
Is that?
Did you?
I'm not finding it.
I was just looking at the, yeah, I was looking at the drawing. The C twelve point seven existing and then down here is a ten point six new.
Okay, here, so that's going to bump out slightly.
We're getting two point one closer.
But it'll
That's two point one, and that's toward the road right away, but that's still within the ten feet. Follow.
Roadway. There's a neighbor, it's a neighbor, just.
No, there's, there's a Yeah.
I'm sorry.
But they're still inside the
Got it.
Yep.
It's a, it's a minimum ten-foot setback on the east, and it still complies even with it being bumped out.
Yeah. It's, I don't know.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll see that for some reason.
That's good. Is this yours or mine?
We're good.
It's mine. No, it's yours. Here. All right. Anyone? Section thirty-eight, forty-three, E two, three standards. Motion.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion at this point, given what I've heard, to go through the first set of standards.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, very good. Run through the standards and then we'll see if there's a second.
So starting with section thirty-eight dash forty, four eighty-three E two. Standard one, the proportion of the main wall, which has been altered by the addition. So the entirety of the existing wall length is remaining in alignment all the way to the south with the addition. So with that, with that extension even beyond it, you know, conforms to its existing setback. So twenty-two feet of what is currently seventy-four feet of structure will be expanded by the addition of a second floor and four additional, they will make the new structure like seventy-eight feet, which is all aligned. I believe that standard is met.
Yes, and the, that's, we're just talking about the twenty-two feet in the middle. So it doesn't matter because the other, the last thirty some feet are
setback.
Their twenty some feet are setback further, right?
It's improved.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's improved, it's still
Right, but it's, but it's but that part is over five feet, that's because it's eight point four, correct?
Uh, standard two, the overall effect of the proposed additional adjoining properties and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So twenty-two proportion of the proposed addition that adds a second story can be expected to be noticeable, but it's typical distance between the homes and the neighborhood. It's primarily comprised of two-story structures anyhow. I think these hearing updates are likely to be beneficial to the neighborhood's character. So I think that standard is met.
Okay.
And standard three, the addition shall not be less than five feet from the side. If there are lot lines, it shall not be less than ten feet from the front lot line. That takes us into the next standard to start reviewing. So I can do that. So now we're going to look at standard.
No.
No.
We're just going to move on this one first.
Move on this one first.
And well. No, I think we can run right, I have no problem running right through all seven standards. And then voting out as a whole. Anybody having a proposition on that?
Yeah.
I think that makes sense, Dave.
Yeah, it's like a substandard to
Yeah. And we'll do it together. It's two sets of standards, but we'll vote on it just one time. All right, I think that, I think that covers.
I agree, because we're incorporating our findings under thirty-eight seventy into this motion.
Perfect. All right, keep going then, David.
So per section thirty-eight seventy, we've got four additional standards to look at, the first being strict compliance with the zoning ordinance, regulating the minimum area yard setbacks, frontage height or density or other regulation would render conformity with those restrictions for the zoning ordinance unnecessarily. So when we look at this, the existing structure is already located less than five feet from the parcel line. And that is the part being expanded. So where possible, the applicants are shifting the structure further from the property line. Strict compliance with required, you know, demolition to more than the existing structure, ramifications for both cost and design. So I think that standard can be met.
Right.
Uh, standard two, that greater request of variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. So offering that flexibility in an area where the parcel sizes are already nonconforming seems to do substantial justice to both the applicant and other property owners. So in addition, most structures in this neighborhood, they already have two stories. It's part of them. So I think this standard can be met. Standard three, that the fight of the property owner applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property. So parcels, again, in this neighborhood are nonconforming at around fifty feet wide, which much narrower than the ninety-foot required for new parcels in the district. So I think by that, the standard is met. Uh, standard number four, the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. So neither of these property owners nor the owners receiving have created the practical difficulties that we're seeing. So they're due to changing zoning regulations in the area that has created nonconforming conditions. So I think that standard can be met as well.
Anything, anybody have anything to add? All right, let's do
Like to second the motion?
Oh, yeah, thank you. You, Dennis, we have a second from Dennis.
So we're ready for roll call, Wolf, please.
Mr. Cern?
Yes.
Mr. Please?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Ead?
Yes.
Mr. Druck?
Yes. You're all set. I think it's a great application. I think, I didn't add to it, I think it needed it, but just adding some height to your possible floodplain areas also are a smart move, and I think that's good for the whole neighborhood also, so. Yeah, yeah.
Mitigate your risk.
Yeah.
Huge deal.
Yeah. All right, you're welcome. Let's just get with Mika in the building department and
remember.
All right, have a good evening.
Mr. Chair, before we move on to the next application, I think the minutes should reflect when Mika introduced this first matter, she mentioned the height variance application being essentially withdrawn. And there was a comment about a discussion of that prior to the meeting, and I just think the record should reflect that the board did not discuss that prior to the meeting. Mika simply notified us that she would be commenting on it during the meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that the record reflects that.
That's a very good call.
Did that appropriately, yes.
That's correct, so for the record, that's why we were not taking that up, and it was covered by staff. Thank you.
So for the rest of restraining that third request for various.
Okay, it was, it was withdrawn by staff, actually. It was explanation at to start. So any reference to well, I'm going to say it, however, any reference to pre-meeting talk is going. There wasn't one. It was at the explanation. All right. One more. Whenever you're ready.
This is an accessory building. Unraveling. And in the area with some larger lots, wooden lots. Uh, the request is for an accessory building that is a hundred and sixty-four square feet larger than what's permitted. There are five standards to go through. You might notice in the let's see, I put the origin center right, yeah. So in the accessory building ordinance, I know that this was talked about sometime not too long after I started. When I started here, we were you, the Z B A was hearing all of the accessory building items. At some point prior to my starting here, the planning commission had actually approved a change allowing staff to a certain amount of accessory building approvals as an administrative process. That was caught kind of in, in the loophole. So the, the way that the process works is the ordinance is approved by the planning commission, it's approved by the board, and then it's sent out to the general code corporation to incorporate it into the online code. It wasn't incorporated into the online code yet when I started here. So I didn't know that that was something that could even be done as an administrative and so for the first year or so that I was here, you were hearing all of those. And at some point, I realized, oh, this is a change of the code. And I had looked that up. And so that's why you ended up seeing as many accessory buildings prior to this. This is coming to the Z B A not because of anything special about the application or that it's a difficult application, but rather because of timing that when it came in before Christmas, usually the administrative process is shorter. And in this case, it wouldn't have made any difference. So if, if I get a lot of public comment, it hasn't happened so far, I think I've done two, maybe three of these. If I get, it requires a public, the offer of a public hearing. If I were to get a lot of negative feedback from neighbors, I would kick it to the D B A anyway. So there's a little bit of a risk involved in taking the administrative one. So given the timing, but I just sent this one right to you. So give you a question, hope you know, I think that it was a little confusing.
It was, okay. Okay, I'll get it. All right, all right, thank you. Okay, with that, I'd like to invite the applicant up, and as you heard me say before, please state your name and address to record and sign in.
John Klauseng, one six three nine zero Greenlee Street. So I would like to go a little larger with the accessory building, just due to the size of my current garage, my existing garage. It's quite difficult to place two cars in there. So another area for myself to park my truck. Many, I have two young boys. We do a lot of recreational things. We have kayaks and, and we're talking about purchasing a boat. So another area just to store those recreational, you know, items and just to give a little more room and I, I, I don't want to go that large because I don't want to, my house isn't that big to begin with, but I don't want to dwarf my house. But I just think the, the small increase is would look good, would look good, so.
There's no problem with height and no problem with where you're placing it, it meets other standards. It's approximately two and a half percent of the lot size. Is that what I remember reading? Okay. All right.
Uh, I, and I was wondering, is there, is there, if I did the square footage, would it be eight thirty-six? For the square footage of my lot? I wasn't sure if that was
I think it was seven thirty-six.
Unfortunately, you have to take off the right of way.
Okay, oh, okay.
It's, it's a really, I'll say on a record, it's a really dumb rule. I hate it because you're paying taxes on the right of way, but you don't get to count it. I don't know who made that up, but
I actually think
Oh, you don't pay taxes?
No, the right of way, uh, square footage is removed before
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I think we actually sold our, our right of way for the bike path.
Okay.
We actually gave that up.
And that's why you probably, otherwise you could get a bigger barn. Otherwise you could have had a bigger barn. Oh, you don't? I always thought you did.
They're supposed to, the right of way is supposed to be exempt.
Well. Well, it doesn't seem like it. My taxes are still too high. I should stop talking about what's up days. I should stop talking, it probably, well, sometimes, okay. Um, anybody on the board have any questions for John?
Mister Chair, I just have a question, it. Is this going to be a block wall construction?
Yes, it's gonna, it's gonna be a block, block building.
Okay, and so is that just a gray cement block, or is it?
So I am a mason contractor, so I tend to do, or I'm planning to do something kind of more decorative.
Okay.
You know, from the, from the street side.
Okay, I was just curious about that, because I've seen some unattractive block buildings.
Yes, there is definitely gray block is not.
Okay.
I've been guessing, if you're a mason contractor and you just build a center block building, you're going to get a hard time from your friends.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I gotta, I have to, uh, do a good job on that, so.
Anybody else?
So that, that's the other reason, it's, it would be, if I can do it myself, it's cheaper than if you don't have, paying somebody to stick build as well, a little more.
Is there a driveway or something that is going to be leading up to, it looked like it was dirt when I drove in today?
Yeah, it's dirt, so I'll put a, uh, a driveway going back, you know, it'll. Where my driveway is, the driveway will continue and go into the back.
Okay.
The work curves to go to your house now, or you just go straight to the new building?
Yep, yep.
All right?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead and have a seat, we'll, we'll call you back up if you have any questions. Um, and with that, I'm going to open a public hearing. And for the record, uh, we have four pieces of correspondence, all from neighbors, and all were in favor. And would anybody in the audience like to speak on behalf of this item, either for or against? Seeing none, um, and for a visual, if who is listening to this, there's nobody else in the audience, so. There is, uh, I will close the public hearing, and we'll open up for board discussion and or a motion. And again, a standard for review is, um, standards under section thirty-eight dash four ninety-one. So anyone have any questions for each other, for Mika, for the applicant? Uh, with, if there's no question or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion. Either in the affirmative or in, other way.
Mister Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the request for the variance, uh, under section thirty-eight dash four ninety-one. Um, based on the following findings, factor one, the area of the accessory building in relation to the size of the lot on which it is to be. Placed, um, that the proposed structure is approximately two point five percent. Of the parcel upon which it would sit and is therefore proportional. The, factor two, the area of the accessory building in relation to the principal building on the lot on which the accessory building is to be placed. Under that factor, uh, the footprint of the home is approximately sixteen hundred eleven square feet. The proposed structure appears to be proportional to the existing residential structure. And I would note there that the applicant is cognizant of the, of the square footage of the home and has attempted to present to us, uh. Accessory structure that would be proportional to that size of the home. Uh, factor number three, the location of the accessory building in relation to other buildings on adjoining lots and in relation to the principal building on the lot. The proposed location of the accessory structure meets the township requirements concerning distances between structures. Um, staff notes that the structure will, will be approximately one hundred seventy-two feet from the neighbor's garage and two hundred twenty-two feet. From the neighbor's home with wooded screening in between. Finally, whether or not the accessory building will affect light and air circulation of any adjoining property. Um. Under that section, under that factor, uh, the accessory building will not affect light or air circulation of any adjoining property, um, given the distance and the wooded screening. And I'll say finally again, because this is actually finally, the last one was number four, this is factor number five. Whether the accessory building will adversely affect the adjoining property or the view from the adjoining property. And again, uh, based on the location, the sighting here, the accessory building will not adversely affect the adjoining property or view. From the adjoining property, given the distance between the structures and, uh, the wooded screening between the two.
Great. Uh, any additions to Crystal's comments? If not, uh, kind of a support for that motion.
Su- support.
All right, we have a motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing done, Kristin, we do a roll call, please.
Mister E?
Yes.
Miss Morgan?
Yes.
Mister Please?
Yes.
Mister Cern?
Yes.
Chair Drive?
Yes. Very good, you're set to go, all right. Have a good night. All right. Okay, um, this is going to be a public comment period, so I will open it to the audience, this is weird. Um, anyone in the audience, there's, again, there's no one here, but anyone in the audience that's just sneaking in or like to make a public comment to the board? Seeing no one in the room, I will close the public comment period, and a couple of things, we have a meeting on March four, I will not be here.
I guess I will be. I think, yeah.
Okay, I will need it. Yep. And I would imagine you'll put that out, please, okay, thank you. All right, um, quick go around, anybody else have anything that we missed? Any comments for each other? I don't have anything else either. Thank you all for tonight, and, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Okay.